We have six total candidates running for two spots and two candidates for mayor running for obviously one spot. And if you wish to learn more from the candidates following the forum, there will be 15 minutes in between this candidate forum and the school board, feel free to reach out to them personally, individually. And also, one more moment before we open for the opening statements. We want to be throwing a lot of dates out here because we have early voting is going to be starting, but there's still time to register to vote. Voting registration ends on October 10th. Early voting starts October 11th. If you're not already registered to vote, you can do it right after this forum online. You can take your phone out and do it right there on voteohio.gov. And then, early voting runs through November 5th. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th. We have all that information on the voteohio.gov. That's the Secretary of State's website. Or you can reach out to the Warren or Butler County Boards of Elections and they will have that identical information. And without further ado, I think we are ready. Ms. Asbury, opening statements. You have two minutes.
Yes. Well, let's see. Check, check. I am so honored to be here. I want you to know, Middletown has come so far. And I want each and every one of you, the citizens, everyone here to give themselves a round of applause because there is a dawn and it's a new day. It's a new day. We have a lot of challenges that have been, you know, but every city has that. And of course, I couldn't be more proud to be a Middletonian. I have seen the light shed upon our city and the change that it seems like has happened overnight from darkness to day. Our citizens have come out of their houses, they're enjoying their town again. They love Middletown, the same as I do. And we need that, we need to keep focusing on that attitude because if we come together, we are stronger. And we need to embrace the changes that are happening, that are positive, and keep our garden growing because it's growing well. And I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Castle, two minutes.
Good evening. I first want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I also want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. My name is Clayton Castle and I am running for Middletown City Council. When I'm out talking to people in the city, I get asked a lot, "Why? Why are you running for city council? Why should we elect you?" And I always pause, not because I don't know what to say, but because I don't know where to start. I'm the son of a police officer and a nurse. I'm the husband of a public school teacher. I myself work at a public university. Having a servant's heart is at the core of our family values. For me, running for council is my servant calling. Since moving here, I've fallen in love with the city and want to see it thrive. So how do we do that? First, we support our police and fire. Top-notch public safety is essential and critical for the vitality of any community. We support our children and our elderly who not only need our help, but they deserve our help. We find ways to connect as a community and build relationships with each other in surrounding areas. We make sure all of our residents in all of our neighborhoods are being listened to and not ignored. We build each other up, not tear each other down. Finally, we dream big. Why can't we have an aquatic center? Why can't we have a Chick-fil-A, a Target? With the right people and through strategic investments and community partnerships, anything is possible. Middletown has a rich history, but it also has incredible potential for a flourishing future. Now is the time to realize that potential. Now is the time to act. Now is the time that we build tomorrow together. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Fernando, Mr. Fernando, you're up, two minutes.
Fernando.
Fernando, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Good evening. I'm John Fernando, a candidate running for Middletown City Council. Thank you for coming out tonight, or if you're watching online, thanks for tuning in. Thanks to the chamber as well for holding the forum. You're here tonight or watching online because you care deeply about the current and future state of Middletown. I'm sitting here tonight because I too care deeply about Middletown, but more specifically, about moving Middletown forward. I'm running because I believe in the promising future of Middletown. Improving the quality of life for the citizens here in Middletown, economic sustainability and growth, public safety, and redevelopment and growth of our downtown, as well as the East End, all matter to me. I have been civically active in one aspect or another throughout this community ever since we moved here 15 years ago. From coordinating citizen-driven events and initiatives such as the Port Middletown Arts and Music Festival that's ran in this community for eight years, to sitting on the board as vice president over the Holiday Hoopla seasonal event that's lit up downtown with amazing light features and an outdoor ice skating rink for the past three years, as well as volunteering on committees like the Visitors Bureau and DMI that help serve our community through tourism initiatives and civic events that support and impact our city and the lives of the people who live here. I've also been an instructor at the Middletown Arts Center and cheerleader and champion the arts throughout this community. I'm known in this community as someone who manages multiple projects simultaneously, from conceptualization to completion, creating, implementing, and managing long-running events in our community which provides residents with something to do, as well as promotes a regional draw. I'm John Fernando and I'm running for Middletown City Council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mulligan, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. First, thanks to you for personally taking your time to be the moderator tonight in the Chamber of Commerce for putting the event together and our city staff for providing us a venue. I'm Joe Mulligan. I'm seeking to serve as the mayor of Middletown because I'm excited about where we are as a city and I'm enthusiastic about where we have to go in the future. It's been a great honor for me to have served a couple of terms on council already. Middletown has great opportunities. We've met challenges and it's time for us to meet the moment in the years ahead. First, my professional background. I started out in media sales and sales management, working for cable and TV operations in Columbus, Pittsburgh, and then in Dayton. In 2006, I decided to come home to where my roots are, here in Middletown, family and friends, and best decision I ever made. In 2009, I decided to change course and get a law degree. I enrolled in a two-year program at the University of Dayton School of Law. So since 2011, I've been a practicing attorney at firms in Dayton and Middletown, concentrating mostly on civil work, estate planning, probate, civil litigation, things along those lines, and help families, small businesses, individuals with legal issues. With two terms on council, I'm proud of the track record. We tackled some big issues. First and foremost, road repaving. I championed efforts to meaningfully address roads for the first time in a generation. With the generous support of taxpayers, we've invested $50 million over the past two years. That accounts for one-third of our, I'm sorry, one-third of our city streets and 200 lane miles. We've added to our police and fire staffing. Our council initiated funding for the new fire stations and those will be built out over the next couple of years. And all in all, just proud of the economic development efforts. A billion dollars since 2011.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mulligan.
Thank you.
Ms. Slamka, two minutes.
Thank you, Michael. To the chamber, everyone here this evening, to those of you watching at home. My name is Elizabeth Slamka. I'm running for mayor of Middletown and I believe I am the best candidate to lead city council and move Middletown forward in a positive direction. I have the leadership skills, a lifetime involvement in our community, and the business experience to get the job done. I was born and raised in Middletown. I grew up in my parents' family business, Central Pastry Shop in downtown. Managing and operating a business has given me clear understanding into the challenges and needs of our business owners, and I am the candidate with the most business experience. I attended Case Western Reserve University in Cleveland, Ohio, where I graduated with honors with two bachelor's degrees and a minor. My professional work experience has been extensive. I have worked locally in Middletown City Schools, at Bishop Fenwick High School, and at the Middletown Public Library. I have worked overseas in Spain and I have worked as an assistant director of admissions at a Philadelphia college. As for public service, I have been involved in our community from the time I rode a tricycle in the Middletown Bike-A-Thon at about two years old, to being a candy striper at the Middletown Hospital and High School, volunteering for MidFest International, sitting on the Board of Directors of Downtown Middletown, Inc., being an active member of the Unhoused Action Circle which assisted the Middletown Health Department with finding solutions for homelessness, and being an executive board member for a new nonprofit looking to partner with the region and find solutions to homelessness county-wide. I know this city, I understand the needs of this community. Whether it's Main Street with its historical homes and their challenges, the Three Census Tracks and their issues where there is a shorter life expectancy of 12 years, or looking for ways to improve businesses on the East End, I can represent our diverse population in Middletown. And I care about listening to the ones of the community. Listening is not the answer, but it is the first step in delivering on the needs of our residents. And as we support all of the people, the entire city is lifted up. I'm part of this community, I'm committed to the people who live here, and I look forward to serving as the next mayor of Middletown. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Wahlbaum, two minutes.
Yes, my name is Jeff Wahlbaum and I'm an educational assistant for West Carrollton City Schools and I'm running for Middletown City Council. I grew up in Kettering, Ohio, and graduated from Fairmont in 1994. I have lived in Middletown for the past seven years and married lifelong Middletonian Lara Russell Wahlbaum. Now Lara's family has strong roots in Middletown. Her grandfather was head of the water department here in Middletown and her dad worked at the Middletown Paper Board. And her mother was a nurse at Middletown Hospital. I have a BA in history from Wright State University and I'm a former intelligence analyst who served in Iraq during the invasion of Iraq in 2003. I helped independent Gary Litzel win the Dane Mayor's race in 2009. During that time, I became a member of the Southeast Dane Priority Board for a year and in 2014, I helped start my neighborhood association and was president for a year. So I have experience below the city council level. I'm running on the platform of improving public safety by hiring at least five to 10 more police officers and develop or start neighborhood associations to work hand-in-hand with the police, which is going to be vital. Also, we need to bring more businesses downtown and work to provide the development of the town mall area. The main motivation for me running, however, is to help improve public safety. Unfortunately, three years ago, when my wife was coming home from her part-time job, she was threatened and harassed by five or six youths from across the street who were drinking and partying. I went outside to make sure my wife was okay and unfortunately was severely beaten and had to go to the hospital. There is no reason why this should happen in Middletown. I will work tirelessly as a member of council to make our streets safe for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Excuse me, Chamber of Commerce, those in attendance and tuning in online, thank you for your time and consideration. For those of you that may not know me, my name is Steve West and I'm seeking a seat on city council. I was born and raised on the west side of Cincinnati, graduated from Oak Hills in 1999, which seems like an eternity ago. And then after that, I joined the Navy, lived in San Diego for a few years. When I finished my enlistment, decided time to get back to Ohio and chose Middletown. Middletown because of the geographic location, close to Cincinnati, close to Dayton. I ended up, my wife worked in Kettering at the time, and I was able to pursue a degree at Miam University. Geographic location is one of the best assets Middletown has to offer. Professionally, I work in the Department of Defense as a contractor and I primarily program manage research and development contracts, both here stateside and around the world. Philanthropically, I've volunteered for years in the community, coaching youth sports at the Y, St. John 23rd, and also I'm currently a school board member at St. John the 23rd. And right now, a lot of people ask, like, "Why are you running?" I mean, there's, it's something I said I probably wouldn't ever do, but I think everybody up here can kind of say that. But over the years, we've seen so many changes, so many positive things in this city. And for years, you know, Cincinnati and Dayton wanted to become a metroplex. And the last piece of undevelopment land was exit 32. And so we're about to change that. We're going to make some key investments in public safety, infrastructure, and town mall. Town mall will be next. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Had a question planned first, but a lot of you had answered it already, so we're going to skip into my second question here. So I had to make a few notes of who is going first and rotating. So, Mr. Castle, this first question is for you. We have one minute for these questions. The business community would take the position that collaboration is a needed skill to perform the job of an elected official. The decisions of the next council will make, will have an impact for the community over the next five to 10 years, maybe even longer, knowing our location in southwest Ohio in Butler County and what may be in our near and possibly distant future, what could be in our future. And, sorry, I re-revised this and I didn't edit it very well, so my apologies. And who could be a collaborative partner for the future of Middletown?
Well, I think when you talk about collaborations, there's a lot of people you'd need to collaborate with on city council. First of all, you need to collaborate with the residents. You want, and you need to know what the residents want, how the residents feel, especially if someone's going in their neighborhood, you want to know to make sure that they have the support as well. Second of all, you need collaboration with the business community. You know, people are going to come to Middletown and they're going to patronize these, they're going to go to these businesses and buy their services and, you know, and go to these places and talk hopefully well about them. And you also need to collaborate with other government entities. So for instance, the town mall, I know we were collaborating a little bit with Warren County. Warren County is a great partner in the business community. And if it's, you know, in Butler County, we should collaborate with Butler County as well. So there are several stakeholders that you need to collaborate with and to consult when making a decision.
All right. Mr. Fernando. Same question. Collaboration. What, I guess, who would you collaborate with and on what projects would you collaborate with that will have a pretty lasting impact, especially in the near future for the city of Middletown?
Sure. What we need to do as a city or as councilman, as the administration, is we need to stop siloing ourselves to just the management here and the administration here within the four walls of our city building. We need to be able to reach out to county leadership. We need to be able to reach out and have a better relationship with state representatives. It's really going to take reaching out to them and bringing them to our table and seeing what our neighbor, our neighboring cities are doing and how they're doing it so well and so robustly, and how we need to be able to bring them to the table or meet them where they're at and figure out what are they doing that is making their communities just boom with success. And so, yeah, I agree with Mr. Castle. The collaboration has to start with the vision of the people and policy and enacting our own master plans that we have. We have master plans that we've spent thousands of dollars on, but not implement fully.
Great. Thank you very much. Before I have you up, I apologize for looking back. I'm used to standing off to the side so I can keep an eye on the clock as well. So my apologies for that, but it's going to happen all night. Mr. Mulligan, same question.
Thank you. As far as collaborating on important projects, I think one thing in our city's master plan is resilient neighborhoods. And some neighborhoods in Middletown are doing just fine. Others are struggling a little bit. Others have suffered disinvestment for decades. We would look for internal partners through a group called Middletown Connect. Ms. Slamka mentioned the work that they've done on Three Census Tracks. They have a state grant, they've formed ambassadors in different neighborhoods. They've provided some feedback to us from residents on what they need. And it's not necessarily crime being top of mind. Sometimes it's things as simple as lighting or smoother sidewalks, or we need a laundromat in this area. So we can, we can use those internal partners to collaborate, to find solutions for those neighborhoods. On a grander scale, we would be looking externally, the Butler County Port Authority, the land bank, maybe our own port authority to take our land bank to 2.0, to where we're not only, we're not just demolishing homes. Instead, we are rehabilitating homes and providing some infill housing.
Thank you very much.
For housing.
Ms. Slamka, same question.
Okay, so, thank you very much. And I think that partnering again with our, like what John Fernando said, was that we have a very big need to respond to our citizens' needs and wishes and also partner with investors, developers that want to come here. Middletown has a lot to offer. As far as big projects, I could see utilizing some of our great assets, our position on the I-75 corridor nearby to the airports, two international airports. I could see us looking also to bring more businesses perhaps from, that will give jobs to people in the workforce that we already have here in Middletown, factories, manufacturing, things like that. So I think we can partner with countywide as well, with Butler County and our neighboring cities.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Wahlbaum.
Yeah, there's basically many different groups and individuals we can work with to collaborate, to help Middletown. Of course, the citizens are the most important, small businesses and large businesses, especially small businesses because they're the lifeblood of our community. We can also collaborate with the police to ensure public safety. If we don't have public safety, we're not going to be able to accomplish anything and our citizens need to feel safe. And we also need to collaborate with county commissioners, state reps, and state senators, and investors and developers. And I'll be the number one advocate for public safety when I'm elected to city council. If we don't have public safety, we will not be able to reach our goals. And I will work full-time at my job for 30 to 40 hours a week here to help our community because the city council will be my, work will be my top priority, to help our citizens achieve our goals and realize our vision for the future.
Great. Thank you very much. And Mr. West.
Yes, thank you. I think Mr. Mulligan hit it, the nail on the head. When you ask, you know, a broad question like that, it really depends on scope and scale of the particular project. If it's something like, for example, the Sunny Hill Community Center, obviously we're going to rely on the community, community feedback, staff feedback here within the city building. On a much larger scale, you know, the city has to be agile enough, councilmen, we have to be agile enough to leverage community assets and potential state assets, whether it be funding, lessons learned. But first and foremost, the most important thing is the collaboration piece. There's neighboring communities we should have monthly meetings with. A lot of the projects that we want to take on, they've already done, and they've done them well. And so I think there's a lot of lessons learned that we can, we can take from that and implement within our city.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, our next question is just for the mayoral candidates, Mr. Mulligan and Ms. Slamka. We'll start with Mr. Mulligan first. You're going to be one of five voices, or five decision-makers on the city. Describe how you can successively advance improvements when you alone can't force change.
Well, we work as a team. You're right. I mean, council through the charter is led ceremonially led by the mayor, but I just have one vote, the mayor just has one vote on council, as other council members do. And one thing I did learn through the leadership program that the chamber put on is, you know, men and women equally informed seldom disagree. So if we can get ourselves educated on whatever topic, ask the questions of staff, collect the data, think about the unintended consequences of what this legislation might do, what the intended consequences are, is this in the best interest of the city? Does it comport with our master plan? As long as we're answering yes to a lot of those questions and it agrees with what the directives we've given city staff in our annual retreat and feedback back and forth throughout the, throughout the year, then normally we would be agreeing on legislation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Slamka.
Thank you. To advance improvements, we do need to build consensus. So how that can happen with people of differing opinions, sometimes strong? Well, one of the skills needed to perform the job of mayor is to have very clear unbiased judgment, but also the ability to temporarily suspend what you think personally sometimes in order to truly listen to somebody else, the information they give you, and then consider it, to not be affected by maybe someone's agenda, but also just to not take sides except for the side of the people. So this kind of perspective can go a long way. This kind of leadership can go a long way in building consensus among people who have those differing views. We do not always have to agree on every point, but we do need a leader who can hear what is said, sit comfortably with discord, and then weave the threads through the commonalities so we can all move forward as a team with the task at hand. I do think that that kind of leadership is what is key for council mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, my next question is going to be just for the council candidates. I want to try to mix it up a little bit where we have just mayoral candidate questions and council questions. But running a government is also not just about collaboration, but compromise. So for the council candidates, how do you approach compromise when you disagree with a fellow council member or the administration? Mr. Fernando, you're up.
Yes. I would approach that with, you have to have the willingness to be able to listen. You have to have the willingness to be able to say when you don't know. And it's okay not to know, but go and find someone who does. Seek out experts in the area that you might lack in order for you to be able to make a sound decision collectively. So you have to be able to listen, you have to be able to bend a little. There are moral issues, right? And those issues, you know, we will stand by and hopefully we stand by collectively. But when we come to disagreeing, we have to be able to research that and seek expert advice and then be able to come together as a collective body to make the best decision that we can collectively make for the city. We can't lose sight that our job up here is not to push our own agenda, but to hear the voice and the needs of the people we serve.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Wahlbaum.
Yes, the most important skills that are needed for this job is going to be being able to listen and be open-minded. We need to work as a team and collaborate together, no matter our differences. And also, being a good analyst, we need to listen to other opinions, especially from the citizens, along with our other city councilmen. I have the leadership skills that'll be able to, so we can work together as a team. I've learned that in the Army, as a, growing up playing sports and all that, I've learned a lot of teamwork. So that's what's going to take to achieve what we need to do here on the council and to make Middletown a great place to live.
Great. Mr. West.
Yes, when it comes to compromise, a lot of times, and I think in recent years, we've seen some very large issues come through council. And, you know, most of the time, when we, you know, the lack of compromising comes from lack of understanding. You know, when there's two different sides, you know, when we look at things politically, we look at city issues, it could be, you know, issues on a national scale, city issues. A lot of times, there's a lack of understanding on both sides. And so through compromising, it's really understanding the opposition's viewpoint. What would it take? You know, is it something we can compromise on? Like Mr. Fernando said, unless it's a moral issue, right? We'll all steadfast on those. But most of the time, the ability to communicate and logically think through things, and if there's more research needed to gain a better understanding of what the disagreement is, that's what you have to do. You have to do what it takes.
Great. And Ms. Asbury, I made an error because I didn't look, can you put two minutes on the clock because I'm going to give you an opportunity to answer both the questions at the same time? So first, the first question is the collaboration. What do you need to do to collaborate, to make, set Middletown up for the future? And then also, how do you compromise with your fellow council members? Two, two minutes.
Actually, well, there we go. I believe that since we do live in the metro area, being both northern Cincinnati and vicinity, south Dayton and vicinity, that it is important to collaborate with our sound, our surrounding metro areas with its peoples, which I believe has been happening with no effort. People, they want to be here. So I think it's important to start collaborating with not only our smaller businesses that are here that need a boost, they want to be here. They, they need to thrive though. And the only way to do that is to collaborate with other surrounding communities, the peoples. Bring them here, bring more widespread media, maybe on local cable. Bring them here, bring more widespread media, maybe on local cable, other than just small media platforms. The businesses, the only way they're going to survive is by a multifaceted effort, you know, in doing so. Marketing, what have you. And then when it comes to compromise, you have to. You have to agree to disagree sometimes with people. Your fellow council should be in one mind and one accord. And of course, there will be agree to disagree, but smart investment is important.
Just a quick follow-up on that. If you agree to disagree, nothing gets done. How do you get something done if you agree to disagree?
Well, somebody has to move forward on that. And it's an important decision, being that someone is taking the dive to do so in order to move the future of the city ahead irregardless.
All right, great. Thank you very much, and I will try not to make that mistake again. My apologies on that. So we're continuing with another city council, and then we'll have a mayor's question here. So Mr. Welbourn, this is for you to start with. Share your role of city council. What is the role of city council, and how do you plan on going to fulfill that role?
Well, the role of city council is to establish high-level policy objectives, including adopting the budget, adopting ordinances and resolutions, making advisory board appointments also, and appointing and overseeing the city manager. We're also responsible to ensure that Middletown meets all requirements established in legislations, such as the requirement to hold public meetings. Now, on certain, we also need to work with, maintain roads and develop annual financial plans. Like I said, I will be leading and representing the community. I will listen to what our citizens demand and take a leadership role to ensure the fiscal stability of our city. I will be the number one advocate for public safety on the city council, and that, that's going to be my number one priority, but working as a team to achieve the goals to make Middletown the best city it can be will be my number one objective, along with public safety.
Great, great. Mr. West?
Yes, thank you. Number one role, really, when I look at council is represent the communities, every community. For many years, I, I can say this, living here since 2005, city council wasn't very transparent for years and, and not approachable. I think, you know, that's changed in recent years. Obviously, we're going to, you know, adopt policies, we're going to pass charters, things like that, we're going to follow the master plan. But really, the big thing is, we want our citizens and our communities to feel represented, feel that they have a voice, feel that they can pick up the phone and call me, email me. They see me at the coffee shop, they can approach me and say, hey, Mr. West, you know, and, and tell me what's going on. That's the number one role. We don't live in Cincinnati, we don't live in New York City, we don't have hundreds of thousands of residents. We're right, just under 50,000. And so the role of, of city council here is to be intimately involved in our communities.
Ms. Asbury, one minute.
And?
The role, what's the role that, your view of the role of city council, and how do you fulfill that?
My view of the role of city council is to be with the people. You have to have that equal, equality, and you have to have that approachable personality. And when you're out in public, you want to hear what the citizens say because, well, to be honest with you, they own every loom of carpet that we're walking on. And so that's my priority. I want to hear what the citizens need, what they want. I want to be approachable, and I feel as though that I'm an equal. No one is above anyone, and that you should be able to, you know, implement that in the community.
All right. Mr. Castle?
My view of what city council's function should be is to develop and set a short-term and long-term vision for the city. We're the ones that, when we're up here, we have to ask ourselves, what kind of city do we want to be in? Or what kind of city do we want to be in five years, 10 years, 20 years? We are the long-term visionaries for the city. We chart a course for policy and initiatives to achieve those goals and aspirations. And finally, council is a collective voice for the city. There are 50,000 or around 50,000 people in the city. Those are 50,000 unique and individual stories, 50,000 unique and individual views of how the city functions, and we need to be listening to all 50,000 because ultimately, they are the ones who elect us. They are our bosses, and they are the ones who have the real power.
All right. Mr. Ferrando?
Ferrando?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I, I can't pronounce names very well, so my apologies.
It's all right, it's all right. Yeah, so our role as council, well, there's a charter. Aside from the charter, it starts there. In addition to that, our role is to listen to the people, set the vision, and establish policy for communities set forth by the charter. So as Clayton indicated, there are 50,000 of you, and there's only going to be five of us. The, the, the community is going to have to be a part of that role if we're going to move Middletown forward. They have to. I, I, I don't, I read recently about the charter and why, I'm sorry, the ward system and why that changed, but I, I kind of liked it because it, it, you know, you had leadership there, and they were the voice within those communities making the decisions. And so I kind of feel like there's this disconnect because as I'm on the campaign trail talking to people, everybody's curious as to what my agenda is, and I throw it back to them, and their response to me is like, I'm kind of like taken aback by why I'm asking them what their agenda is. It starts with the people. My role is to listen, engage, collaborate, and empower the people in this city.
Great. Thank you. We're, this is going pretty fast, so I'm going to be hopping around with some questions here. I want to start with the mayoral candidates here. I think it would be Ms. Slamka first on this, because I think we did Mr. Mulligan first in the first mayoral question, but I wanted to go into the policy question. The unfortunate circumstances surrounding Central Connections has been a topic of controversy and conversation in the community. It's a very complex and startling story that really, the Journal News reporters, Rick McCrab and Lauren Pack, had covered extensively and will continue to do so. But how do you keep from setting a precedent for the city to bail out another nonprofit from failing?
That's a great question. Thank you, Michael. So when I think of what happened with Central Connections, and like you said, how to keep the city from bailing out, if it's happening here, where else might it be happening in the city is what I'd like to look at. Again, it's happened, we can't change that, but we can start with even just having a city representative on every board that's taking city funds. That would be a good start. Running audits and paying attention to that, having reports done so we can keep up with what's going on in the city. The levy that went towards Central Connections, that's a big deal for the people, and it hurts us personally when something like this can happen. We are human, we are fallible, but this is not the kind of thing that the city should allow. So that's what I would do. I would make sure the city is highly involved with everything that's involved with the city.
Mr. Mulligan?
My answer to that is, I, I don't think what city council voted on last night was precedent-setting in the sense that the city would be on the hook to bail out nonprofits in the future that ran into financial difficulties. The Central Connections, Middletown Senior Center Incorporated is, provides a unique service. It services to, to really a vulnerable population of older adults in Middletown, and we need to protect them. But also, that center was a gathering place for so many organizations in the community. The Rotary Clubs, the Kiwanis, other nonprofits met there, and it was, in a sense, kind of a, a living room for the community, and we want to see that available. As far as that organization moving forward, that building going forward, I think, talking about collaboration, we'll, we'll be looking to other nonprofits, the schools, places like Mount Pleasant, Otterbine, the YMCA, other organizations to come in and help operate that and provide programming, and that'll prevent it from being a financial burden in the future.
Thank you very much. I know others may want to weigh in on that, but I want to try to keep it a little bit, moving a little bit more. We're slowing down a little bit, but I have another juicy question for you here. Moving into some general policy questions, what do you feel is keeping Middletown from expanding and growing? What, what do, what does Middletown need? Mr. West?
Yeah, that's, that's a very interesting question. I think what, what's kept Middletown from expanding and growing has been for years, now soon, this, this is changing, but for years, the lack of development off of 75. When we look at urban sprawl between Cincinnati and Dayton, it literally skipped us. They built a whole new exit called Austin Landing, Austin Boulevard. I mean, they built a whole new exit. We missed out on that. We missed out on the Racino, we missed out on so many things. If you think about it this way, if we had even one of those developments that had gone in 10, 12 years ago, imagine, imagine the tax revenue dollars this city would have had all of this time. Now, I will say, you know, that's going to change here in the near future, but that's been the biggest thing that's held us back, whether we look at repaving roads, you know, or re, you know, reinvesting in other infrastructure, public safety. We've always had to, to have a shoestring budget because we missed out on all of these key developments on the 75 corridor.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Asbury?
And, and to add on to that, I, I have to say that in order for a city to flourish and breathe and grow, you have to be able to adjust to change. And of course, part of that is bringing business. We have to put a juicy little stakeout there for them and basically say, look, we have a grant person, I don't care if they're volunteer or they're hired, that can find grants to cut these small businesses a tax abatement of some sort, if not a titrated one. We've got to let these little, little businesses breathe. When they come here, they need to thrive because they are the very backbone of any community, especially a small city like ours, and that is smart investment. Therefore, your investment brings you money back.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Castle?
Yeah, I really have to agree with Steve on this because I've thought a lot about the I-75 corridor and what is, what is there now and what is going to be going on there. I remember when I was a kid and I would visit my great-grandmother in Middletown, and Town Mall was a booming mall with a lot of business, and that drove people there. The I-75 corridor is our front door to the city. People are not going to want to come into the city, come into downtown and go to our businesses downtown if they're not getting off the highway. I, I fully agree, agree with what Steve said about, we are losing out to Union Center, we are losing out to Liberty Center, Austin Landing, and it's time that we stop losing and we start winning, and we do that by continuing to develop everything from 75 to downtown.
Great. Mr. Ferrando?
Yes, so I, I'm going to go back to, we have to have the willingness to look at larger regional models and partner with those leaders and not just be siloed internally with our administration and management. We have to be able to go to these other communities, cities, counties around us that have obviously gotten it right. I mean, I have four kids, and my wife and I, most of the time, are leaving Middletown to go to surrounding cities and communities to do anything entertainment. We have to be able to look at the larger regional model and be able to go there and ask their city managers and ask their management and have conversations and dialogues with their mayors and, and council members and figure out what are they doing and what are we not?
All right. Mr. Welbourn?
Yes, when it comes to missing, what we're, what's holding us back is basically, we're lacking a lot of vision and missing a lot of business opportunities, especially along I-75 near the Town Mall area. Now, when I was on the Southeast Dane Priority Board, we had at least two meetings where we had studies showing how in the next 20, 30, 40 years, Dane and Cincinnati would be like a megopolis. So we're right smack dab in the middle of, between Dane and Cincinnati. So we need to take advantage and develop the Town Mall area. That's what's holding us back. We need to have some economic drive and some ambition to make Middletown number one economic force, that's between Dane and Cincinnati. Simple as that.
Great, thank you very much. Now, I want to ask the council or the, our mayor candidates this. Barriers to progress. There are, I mean, we just had a question from the council candidates answering one barrier to progress. What are some of the other barriers to progress? And specifically, I want you to see if you can address housing and homelessness because that is an issue in many communities around Butler County, around the region, around the country.
I don't think I can do that in one minute.
We'll try, please.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try to do it in 90 seconds, but I, I would take exception to the question about Middletown not growing, what's, what's holding us back. Since the last census, 2010 to 2020, we grew by 2,400 households at a rate in the high 4%, which was higher than the city of Hamilton and higher than the growth rate of the state of Ohio. So I think we're growing both in population, the income tax records from 2010, just the baseline, $17 million collected on the 1.5% income tax. 10 years later is up to 20. Last, this year, we're pacing at, I'm sorry, 2022 at $25 million, just on the 1.5% income tax. So we went from 17 to 20 to 25. That means we are growing in the right direction. People are moving here, they're working, they're buying homes. I mean, so I, I guess, take exception to the question that we're being held back from growth. We've been pretty judicious on development on the east end, and I'm glad that years ago, we didn't say, okay, we're going to do a gas station and a fast food restaurant at the Bender Tract. Instead, we waited. Now we have a $300 million development that's going to be residential hotels, event center on the Bender Tract. Part of that's owned by the city. Warren County's on board, is 60% rented at this point. So we have a lot to look forward to on the highway. So I, I think maybe our, maybe our own self-perception is holding us back, but we've, we've got, we've got bright things ahead.
All right. I'll give you about the same amount of time, Ms. Slamka, same question. What are some of the barriers to progress? And, and, and I, I would like to see if you can answer some of the homeless issues and housing, but let me get Ms. Slamka first.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I think of when Mr. West and Welbourn, everyone here has pretty much touched on the I-75 corridor. When we talk about missing out, sometimes I wonder if that has to do also with our perception, the way we are perceived as a city. Those of us who live in Middletown, we know why we love it. We know about how this community has such a heart and drive. But to people in the region around us, all they hear, see, and repeat are negatives. We have not done a good job of marketing ourselves. So of course, I think about that. There is a way to do that, but I would like to also answer your question about homelessness and housing as barriers. It's all connected, everything's connected. We are lacking in some of the jobs that could put our, our workforce to work, our manufacturing workforce to work. I have some ideas about that. And homelessness is, is like a spectrum. We have people who are at the lower end, actively addicted, struggling, who are chronically homeless, they need certain kind of help. We have people on the other end who are just a paycheck away from being there as well. So there are ways, we can use some of grants, different, there are so many different funds and things like that, utilizing regional Butler County programs as well to help people to continue to stay in the homes that they are already in and not allow that kind of problem to happen. But there's so much to say about this issue.
Great. If you can, maybe 10 or 15 seconds of, how do you address homelessness? I know that's a big question in 10 or 15 seconds.
Well, the city's been, you know, at the forefront, getting Hope House moved from the Central Business District to Grove Street, expanded that so that there are residential Section 8 vouchers there for people coming off addiction issues, can stay, provide some more capacity in that way. As far as the, the new initiatives, I applaud the, the current city manager who said, you know, these encampments can't happen on city property. You know, this is not fair to those individuals. We have affordable housing here, we have treatment programs, it doesn't make sense for you to live on the street.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to do a couple rapid-fire, well, one rapid-fire questions before we start closing arguments because it's about, we're almost done. Ms. Asbury, we're going to start with you. Why do you want to be elected? 10 seconds.
Why do I want to be elected?
Well, I can tell you why. Well, I can tell you why I want to be elected. I have long seen such potential in the city of Middletown. I love its people. I think that it's highly important as a leader, and I'm your write-in candidate, to be able to empower the people of Middletown. That is what I want to do.
Great. Mr. Castle, why do you want to be elected?
I moved here a few years ago when I married my beautiful wife, Heather. And I immediately fell in love with the city. I have family roots here. As a kid, we visited here, my great-grandparents lived here, until my great-grandmother passed away in 2008. But when I moved back here, I saw a lot of the things that I enjoyed as a kid in disrepair, the Manchester Inn, the Town Mall. And I felt like I had a calling to do something about that. And I, you know, I said in my opening statement, and I'll say it again in my closing statement, "This is really a calling. I feel like I can use my skills to better Middletown."
All right. Real quick, try to take a little bit less time, Mr. Ferrando, because we're going to get closing statements here soon. Why do you want to be elected?
I want to be elected as Middletown's next council member. As Joe put it, "We've done a lot, we've accomplished a lot, we could do more."
Mr. Mulligan, why do you want to be mayor?
I have the experience that is, you know, would provide steady leadership. I have the knowledge, the relationships at the state, the local, the county level. We're in a great place. The fiscal responsibility of the past provides us with the flexibility moving forward to reinvest in our city.
Ms. Slampka, why do you want to be mayor?
Thank you. I want to give back to the quality of life, the recreation for residents here in the city. I want to streamline processes for businesses, create a flow there that's efficient and welcoming to not only new business, but also establish businesses here and create those relationships and keep them.
Mr. Welbourn, why do you want to be elected?
Yeah, I want to be elected because I want to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people. Middletown is a great city, has a great history. And I want to be a part of that and be a driving force to make us number-one.
All right. Mr. West, why do you want to be elected? Did you get your closing statements?
2007, Forbes called Middletown "The worst place to live in America." And I think I speak for everybody here in the room, everybody that's watching. I took, I personally took offense to that. And ever since then, we've changed this city, and we are on the brink of doing great things. We've got some of the largest developments going in, the state of Ohio in the next couple of years. And we also have a lot of potential downtown. We've got some new investors here in town that we can collaborate with.
Thank you very much. And you can start with closing statements, and we'll do reverse off.
All right. Once again, thanks, everybody, for your time and your consideration. Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pittman, the chamber, everybody that's here. It's a pretty big crowd tonight, see many friendly faces. I'd like to thank all the other candidates. This isn't easy to do. But in closing, I'd like to say, you know, tonight, we've discussed a lot of hot topics. A lot of things are moving and shaking here in the city. Aquatic Center, Sunny Hill. We've got quite a bit going on with the unfortunate events at the Senior Center. Obviously, East End, Town Mall is going to be a huge, a huge thing. We're going to get it done. We're going to make some changes here in the next four years. Public safety, we've got to reinvest. You know, public safety also includes waterworks, you know? You know, police, firefighters. We are a few million dollars short on the new fire stations. I think we've got some, we've got some creative ways to make that up. So, in closing, I see I'm out of time. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Welbourn. I'm sitting down because my back is hurting, so. Mr. Welbourn, one minute.
Yes, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pittman, and my fellow candidates, and all those who attended our candidates' forum tonight. Thank you. I'm the most qualified candidate for city council here tonight with my experience on the Southeast Dane Priority Board and being president of my old neighborhood association, which gives me the background to lead Middletown to a rebirth and renaissance. As I stated before, public safety will be my top priority as a member of city council. We need neighborhoods that are safe and crime-free for our children and our families. My time in the United States Army has developed my teamwork skills, and I will use those skills on city council. Finally, my analytical skills as an intelligence analyst will allow me to find ways to bring more economic development to Middletown. I humbly and respectfully ask for your vote on Election Day. You can check out my website at welbournformiddletown.com. Thank you. Have a great night.
All right. Ms. Slampka, one minute.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone here tonight again, the chamber, those watching. I'm just grateful for this opportunity to speak with all of you, to share more about my passion for the city and my desire to serve the people. I agree, I would love to see a fully funded, a fully staffed, highly-trained police force for safety. That would be something I would really be excited about. Middletown has a lot going for it. From our workforce, the riverfront possibilities, our growing and diverse population, placement between the two major highway corridors and the two international airports, and our clean water. It's just a matter of bringing everything together, moving our vision forward in a positive direction. I'm here to build that strong foundation and lead Middletown to a brighter, more positive future. I love this city, always have, and am devoted to working tirelessly for all of you. With my business experience, leadership roles in the community, and public service record, I hope you will vote Elizabeth Slampka for mayor. Thank you. Good night.
All right. Mr. Mulligan, one minute.
I'll add my thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and all involved in putting on tonight's candidate forum. I'm Joe Mulligan, and I stand, sit before you, humbled and grateful for the opportunity to have served two terms on council. We worked through some very challenging times and came through it a stronger and better city. I was part of a team that decided we were comprehensively, meaningfully going to address road repaving, and we did it with the support of voters. I was part of the team that created the funding stream for the new fire stations that's going to better serve our first responders and provide better protection to our citizens. I was part of a team that, from the outside, attracted $1 billion of commercial investments since 2011. We've got another $300 million coming in the next couple of years at Renaissance Point. These are great times for Middletown. We have a strong balance sheet now because we've been fiscally conservative in the past, and it's time that we reinvest in our people. We're going to add to our staff. Our public safety forces are going to be larger, they're going to be well-equipped.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferrando.
Thank you again for this opportunity. And as your next city council-elected member, I will be invested in championing the right efforts, policies, and agenda towards moving Middletown forward. To do this efficiently and effectively, we must do it collectively. It's going to take all of us, each of us, doing our part. There is going to be five of us sitting up here elected in November. There's 50,000 of you. Let's get together and move Middletown forward.
All right. Mr. Castle.
I first want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event and Mr. Pittman for moderating this event, and for everyone for coming out. My platform is simple. More resources for police and fire, bringing an aquatic center to Middletown for our families to create lasting memories, continued economic development at the I-75 corridor downtown and across the city, increased resources for community events, enhancing the city's partnership with Middletown City Schools, and listening to all residents, no matter what part of the city they live in. I want to see a thriving, vibrant Middletown. No more time for talk, it's time for action. Earlier tonight, I said running for office is my calling. It's my God-given calling. Recently, I came across a scripture that I've pondered and prayed about. It's Galatians 6:9. It reads, "Let us not become weary in doing good, for at the proper time we will reap a harvest if we do not give up." We will reap a harvest if we do not give up. Elect Clayton Castle to Middletown City Council, and we will reap that harvest once again.
Thank you very much. Ms. Asbury, final word.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for being here this evening and spending your time, which is so valuable. I want to ensure you that, for a very long time, I've had this calling in my heart. It goes back a long, long time. And I want to assure you, as your city council member, that you're in good hands. You're in a leader's hands. I'm a businesswoman. And I feel strongly that I can not only lead this community in the right direction, but work with others to do the same. And of course, untangle the discord that is here. And we will invest further. And I thank you so much and hope that you will elect me November 7.
All right. Thank you very much. And that concludes our forum. I do want to thank the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for the audience to listen and be an interested member of the society because without you guys, this wouldn't happen. Also, to register to vote, you have until October 10. Early voting starts October 11 and runs through November 5. And Election Day is November 7. Thank you very much. And you can register to vote now if you haven't done so. VoteOhio.com.